Thank you, sir.
Three progress.
Ready, we're in. Thank you so much.
That was good. Did it have to say that?
It already did.
Okay, I'm on a call to order. Our Tuesday, August 27th, special post session. And sure, I'd like to repeat that this is the council. Go ahead and put it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council agency authority, Mama Taylor.
Here.
Council agency authority, member Torres.
Here.
Council agency authority, member Van.
Here.
Mayor, pretend vice chair, Kristen Warren. Mayor, and mayor, Chairman Shaw.
Have we received any public comment on closed session items?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Have we received any requests from the staff?
We have one.
Okay, our legal counsel, Paul, so the law, what can we do?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. There is an item on closed session conference with legal counsel and dispute of litigation exposure pursuant to government closed session 5.956. There were potential cases, too. Thank you.
Who cares? Okay, we're going to convene in the closed session. The audience. If you'll just be able to wait for a moment, our sitting manager had to make the call. She should be there in a couple minutes. Okay, I'm on a call to order. Our regular schedule, so you can help some in this particular time. Go ahead and put it.
You, Mr. Mayor. Council agency authority, Mama Taylor.
Here.
Council agency authority, member Torres.
Here.
Council agency authority, member Van.
Here.
Mayor, pretend vice chair, Kristen Warren. Mayor, and mayor, chairman, Chairman Shaw.
Thank you. Okay, if you'll please all join me in the pledge. Katie, you want to read this tonight?
Absolutely. It's written in the heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice.
Thank you. We did have a closed session. I'm sure anything we've pulled out.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Okay, special presentations and awards. Our first presentation is by WAGS pet adoption, sharing their mission with the council and providing information on current operations.
I have Ms. Courtney and Ms. Michelle here to present the back half of our presentation. If you can hit that first slide for us, we can follow along. Thank you. Again, introducing myself and Michelle. We are the team that have been running WAGS for the past thirteen years. I'm the executive director. Michelle is on board president. We started out with just a couple of caretakers or kennel attendants and some volunteer veterinarians. We have now grown to seventeen caretakers and a team of veterinarians that have been with us for about seven to ten years, which is really unusual for an animal shelter in California. In this last year, we've added a community outreach manager who a brand we received from UC Davis, a dog behavior caretaker as well, five volunteer coordinators through our foster program, both for cats and dogs, as well as for our general volunteer program. We also have over a hundred and fifty active volunteers and fosters that help with dog walking, social media pet detectives. If you're not familiar with what we do in that aspect, we are constantly scouring social media, looking for people that are looking for their lost pets to see if we have them in our shelter to get them back home as quickly as possible. We have volunteers that are also helping us with that, and you will see them commenting on those posts. Then go to WAGS, that's where your pet is, so that gets them home faster. We also have them helping us donate supplies, assisting us with other aspects of social media, as well as fostering kittens and dogs. Do the next slide. This is our mission. WAGS is committed to the welfare of animals. Our mission is to provide the best quality of care, advocacy, and shelter for lost and unhealthy animals seeking new permanent living homes. That's our mission statement that we go by all the time. Our personal mission, for myself and Michelle, is that everyone have a WAGS pet. You know, we're kind of biased to our shelter. It also means to us to have somebody, excuse me. It is also great to have somebody be able to do something for WAGS or for the WAGS animals to help us continue our high quality of care. That's another part of our mission, our personal mission for WAGS. Even if that means helping us catch the things that we've missed just to help improve our services. We never turn away anything that is something that we can improve upon. Obviously, more eyes on the shelters better than just a few. If you look down at our guiding principles, this is also something that we strive to achieve daily. Education for the community, striving for lower retribution rates, always finding permanent forever homes, promoting advocacy, and ensuring proper shelter while they are in our care. Next slide. What do we do? What does WAGS do? What do we do for the cities that we service? We have three city contracts. Westminster, we got in two thousand eleven. Stanton, two thousand fourteen, and just recently, Seal Beach, in two thousand twenty-three. If you look at the graphic, adoptions is kind of our core. We are looking for those forever homes. That's not the only thing that we do. We have a TNR program, a community cat program, so we are not euthanizing the feral cats that are coming in. We're fixing them, putting them back out in the community to do their job. We don't feel that they have a place being rehomed. They already have a home out there. Someone's feeding them, so that's one of the things that we do. Return to home, getting these animals back to their original houses. Fostering, working with the community by way of offering volunteer opportunities, as well as getting animals reunited with owners before they even have to enter the shelter. Veterinary care for the animals that are in our care, as well as housing the stray animals. Next slide. This one is a little wordy, so I'm going to let that be for you guys to review on your own. If you don't have a copy of this, we'd be more than happy to send one over to you so you can read over all the things that we do. As you can see, though, by all of this, we are a tiny but mighty shelter, and we can provide and have more programs running than most of the larger shelters that are around us. So we are able to do quite a bit with what we have. Next slide. And if you don't mind pushing play, this is a short video highlighting our volunteer program. Our mission is to make a difference in what families need by counting volunteer or off the petting. For adults, we offer diverse volunteer duties such as housekeeping, which includes cats, dishes, laundry, and hair replacement. If you prefer spending time outdoors, our dog development enrichment program welcomes volunteers for dog walking. Feline enthusiasts can participate in our feline friends program, cuddle with cats, or even try their hand at photography. For those interested in office roles, we have opportunities of data entry both onsite and offsite. Juju's can engage in a new program that involves running a WAGS mini store, along with life housekeeping and cat care. Families can bond over cat cuddling sessions, creating lasting memories while making a difference. Looking to make a bigger impact? Explore our foster opportunities where you can provide temporary homes for kittens, dogs, or even long-term care for animals in need. Every volunteer role of WAGS pet adoption contributes to creating a safer and happier world for our furry friends. Join us today and become a part of something truly special. Your time, dedication, and love can change lives. Together, we can make a difference at WAGS pet adoption. That's an overview of what our volunteer program looks like, and it continues to grow, feels like daily. We think that people can use it to help us out. So this is kind of a snapshot of our inclusivity. We don't think that inclusivity is extremely important to us at WAGS. We have the majority of our information and handouts, social media flyers, are all translated into Spanish and Vietnamese to ensure that our messages reach as many citizens as possible. That's kind of an example of that. We also utilize QR codes whenever we can to make our processes easier. Our goal today, as it has always been, is to remove as many barriers as possible and to say yes. Getting people in the door so animals can get adopted. That's what this slide is representing. And I'm going to now hand it over to Michelle to finish our presentation. Thank you for listening.
First, she's tall. Second thing, we would, next slide. So not only the president of the board, as you can see, we are such a small shelter, so I do a little bit more than that. I do the finances, HR, some strategic planning, and we work together to do a lot of other tasks to keep the shelter running. So one of the things is phoning and operations to figure out capacity and how do we manage the budget. So the next few slides talk about what is it that you pay for, the Stanton citizens. So there we go. Right here, these are the things that you pay for. The services, there are four ways that animals come to WAGS, and this explains from two thousand nineteen. And I kind of set it up so it's pre-COVID and post-COVID because things have changed, pre-COVID and post-COVID. And just recently, there was a bump up in your contract fees to us that we had to get a small increase because there's been an increase in capacity and amount of animals that come to WAGS and are staying at WAGS for a length of time, as well as the amount of animals. And you can see it's represented in some of the statistics. Animals come to us in four different ways, to keep it simple. They are either stray on the streets of Stanton, and they are brought in by citizens. They are brought in by animal control. So you can see that in two thousand nineteen, two hundred and seventy-three, two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-eight, and right now, we're in mid-year, so two hundred and sixty-one. Animal control, two thousand nineteen, compared to two thousand twenty-three, goes already higher, and we're already going to pass by that, one ninety-two. And I know we will see post-pre-COVID numbers of animal control bringing in animals. Return to home, that number represents animals being brought in to WAGS and not going home. Because return to home number was forty-six animals that went back out of WAGS, and this year, only fourteen animals have left WAGS, go back into the citizen's home of Stanton. So that means animals are not going back to the citizens of Stanton. They're staying at WAGS. But the last number there is TNR. We had very active programs pre-COVID, and you can see that we dropped from seventy-eight cats returning to the community fixed, and now we only have twenty cats returning to the community of Stanton that were fixed. We have not been able to do our return trap mule release, returning cats to the community spayed or neutered because we have run out of funds, we do not have the capacity. That means that we are not capturing cats, fixing them. They're out there, and they are breeding beyond what we want them to be doing. Because pre-COVID, we had the finances to do it, we had the capacity, and we do not post COVID. This is a sense of, I want to give you a sense of what does it cost to have a cat brought into a shelter. So these are all the different costs that happen. This is right in the beginning, the first few days, things that happen that are costing WAGS for a cat. It gets a wellness exam, it gets MBRCP vaccines, it gets revaccinations, it gets care, food supplies. We often try to get it into a foster home so that we reduce care costs. If we go to the next slide, we'll see dogs. This is the cost again for WAGS on the front end. A dog actually costs more on the first seventy-two hours and thereafter because dogs are all housed separately, and they require one staff person minimally three times a day, minimally fifteen minutes a day to care for them, and everything that they require is a separate, independent care cost. Whereas with cats, we often can take care of them in group care after they're spayed and neutered. And that is how much it would cost to take care of a dog in a shelter over a period of time. That gives you a sense of shelter cost for a species. Next slide. That gives you a sense of what you're paying for. Here is what is happening again in the shelter. In two thousand nineteen, for dogs, they were spending an average fifteen days there. Now, in two thousand twenty-four, it's sixty-six days. But I do want to say, we have many dogs that are spending up to a year with us. The length of stay for animals is beyond what we've ever thought could happen in a shelter or in animal welfare across California, across the United States. There is a capacity issue that is just the animal crisis happening. That's happening because people cannot afford to keep their animals post-COVID. There has not been enough veterinary care here in Southern California. It's been too expensive. It has been unhoused people, which means unhoused animals. It has been folks that have breeder, backyard breeders, that don't have access to veterinary care, number one, and they don't keep their litters, and they turn them over to shelters, so we have a definite high capacity, and they will sit there for long periods of time until they're adopted. It has been large, medium, and large animals that sit in the shelter for long periods of time because people who come in to adopt will see ten huskies, and there is decision fatigue that happens because they all look the same, and people look at them, walk past them. They'll see ten Malinois, ten Huskies, and then maybe ten German Shepherds, and walk past them and say that they only want a small dog. We can attract them to a medium and large dog. And there's also landlord issues that they don't want folks to bring in medium and large dogs. These are all issues that bring that average. I would think by the end of this year that we pass sixty-six states for a large dog in the shelter. Same thing happens here for cats. It's to be thirty-two days, and now it's in the past fifty days in the shelter. If it weren't for foster parents helping us out, we would not be able to maintain the amount of cats. We are a live, we are a low-kill shelter. Years, we've always been a no-kill. This year, we changed the language to be a high-low-kill, high-release, live-release shelter. And we do that because we need the help of fosters. Because we have the help of fosters, three hundred cats are in foster homes right now. If all cats that we are responsible for were unpopulated, we would not be able to be net safe. That would have over five hundred and seventy-five cats under one roof, and that would be completely unsafe. So thankfully, with fosters, we're able to maintain a low-kill, safer environment for all these cats. If we did not have fostering, that average number would go up, or we would have a higher sickness number. That's why we're using that, that number. Very sad, half up, sickness, ever. Cats and kittens. As you can also see, other things that have happened in that, what you're paying for, in this past year, the increase in costs in Stanton, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four, the jump in cost of care and expenses and operating costs, it's been incredible. Kennel attendants went from twelve dollars an hour to seventeen. Let me tell you, they work so hard every day, seventy dollars an hour for what you're doing. Maybe the downstream, we're at a dumb, twenty dollars an hour, is still not enough for them. And we're paying seventeen, and that's a huge budget crunch for us. If we're paying just seventeen, I'd love to be, and that's affecting us a bunch. They went from zero days of sick time to five days. Our insurance from injuries, what this comp does if being over capacity and having large dogs, multiple cats, went from twenty-two thousand a year to fifty-two, and what this comp changes in five years, and then you can see the rest changes now. These are all things that we have to pass on to our three cities that we work with in order to stay, be able to pay the bills. But we have three ways that we pay bills. One is through the contracts. Two is our adoption fees, and three is through donation, donations that we receive through citizens and grants. So those are the ways that we try to maintain a balance, I'm glad you said. We know that we are in a crisis, animal crisis. Next slide. We are doing everything we can to help with the overpopulation, our capacity issue, the systematic problems that are happening, that are happening in animal welfare. And although it sounds like we're in a place of despair, we have worked hard to stay as positive as possible, and now work on education programs, work on public awareness, increase our volunteerism, our social media push to educate people, work on partnerships, outreach, to increase any other financial support that we can through grant writing, and work on mental and physical enrichment for our cats, as well as our dogs, by using our volunteers and any other means that we can come up with through education, educating ourselves on other means, and trying to be creative in other ways that we can partner with veterinarians locally for stay and maneuver. So we're hoping for better outcomes in the near future, and we're hoping to educate you as well so that we can increase our partnerships here in Stanton with local businesses and your community to improve adoptions and pet ownership relationships.
Questions? Anyway, thank you very much for that presentation. I've had the pleasure of visiting your facility over the years, and your operation is immaculately kept. I know that right now you're kind of overwhelmed because, as you can see with the numbers, the increase in the population of animals, especially ones that are out on the street, has greatly increased. So all I can say is that whatever we can do to help you, always reach out to us, we support you, and I know that our residents are very happy to have you by your side. So thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
We have been through all the years, so maybe we can contact with you, and maybe you guys could, I would keep the wordness out there, so we can give more to them.
With our new community outreach manager, we would like that, but she is more than willing to come to any event, so let us in touch with whoever we need to.
I have to reiterate the dates that I've been here, facility is immaculate. Lots of cats and dogs there, have to get out there really quick, clarity out to the cats.
But if we find ourselves on the end of the road soon.
My next presentation is by the state community service department, right in this city council, with an update on the academy resource service from our new building.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I'd like to introduce community services coordinator Jessica Sadio to give an overview on the family resource centers and new programs, and some really valuable programs that have been strengthened in our community residents.
Hey, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Johnson Pio, and I'm the receiving coordinator here with the city of Stanton. And like Sadio mentioned, I will be sharing a little bit of the stand person. Fact stands for Families and Communities Together, and we are a network of sixteen family resource centers throughout Orange County. And Fact is administered through the Orange County Social Services Agency for a five-year grant cycle, and this grant provides funding support for staffing and operational costs for our seven core services, which we'll be talking about shortly. So Fact FRC is a community-based site run by collaborative partnerships, and again, I'll be talking a little bit more about it, but all of our C's are open to Orange County residents, your families, children eighteen and younger, or twenty-one and younger, if a child has a disability. Our programs and services are designed to strengthen families and raise resilience, and of course, once again, even though our programs are open to OC residents and families with children eighteen and younger, we do not turn away individuals, but we will also provide that information in a role which I'll be talking about shortly. Our core services are family support services, domestic violence support, counseling, and parenting education. Family support services are provided through the Brennan Center, and our case manager, our family support advocate, provides individualized plans for families in order to increase that resilience. Entro House provides our domestic violence support, and we also have a parent's, sorry, personal empowerment program that's short-term for ten weeks, so they work.
Here is what is happening again in the shelter. In two thousand nineteen, four dogs, they were spending an average fifteen days there. Now, in two thousand twenty-four, it's sixty-six days. But I do want to say we have many dogs that are spending up to a year with us. The length of stay for animals is beyond what we've ever thought could happen in a shelter or in animal welfare across California or across the United States. There is a capacity issue that is just the animal crisis happening. That's happening because people cannot afford to keep their animals post-COVID. There has not been enough veterinary care here in Southern California. It's been too expensive. It has been unhoused people, which means unhoused animals. It has been folks that have breeders, backyard breeders, that don't have access to veterinary care, number one. And they don't keep their litters and they turn them over to shelters. So we have a high capacity and they will sit there for long periods of time until they're adopted. It has been large, medium and large animals that sit in the shelter for long periods of time because people who come in to adopt will see ten huskies and there is decision fatigue that happens because they all look the same. And people look at them, walk past them. They'll see ten Malawats, ten Huskies, and then maybe ten German Shepherds and walk past them and say that they only want a small dog. We can attract them to a medium and large dog. And there's also landlord issues that they don't want folks to bring in medium and large dogs. These are all issues that bring that average. I would think by the end of this year that we pass sixty-six days for a large dog in the shelter. Same thing happens here for cats. It's to be thirty-two days and now it's in the past fifty days in the shelter. If it weren't for foster parents helping us out, we would not be able to maintain the amount of cats. We are a live, we are a low-kill shelter. Years, we've always been a no-kill. This year, we changed the language to be a high-low-kill, high-release, live-release shelter. And we did that because we need the help of fosters. Because we have the help of fosters, three hundred cats are in foster homes right now. If all cats that we are responsible for were unpopulated, we would not be able to be net safe. That would have over five hundred seventy-five cats under one roof and that would be completely unsafe. So thankfully with fosters, we're able to maintain a low-kill, safer environment for all these cats. If we did not have fostering, that average number would go up or we would have a higher sickness number. That's why we're using that number. Very sad, half of the sickness that we have cats. As you can also see, other things that have happened in that what we're paying for this past year, we've increased costs standing. Two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four, the jump in cost of care and expenses and operating costs has been incredible. Handle attendants went from twelve dollars an hour to seventeen. Let me tell you, they work so hard every day, seventy dollars an hour for what you're doing. Maybe the downstream work at a dumb's twenty dollars an hour is still not enough for them. And we're paying seventeen and that's a huge budget crunch for us. Paying just seventeen, I'd love to pay. And that's affecting us a bunch. They went from zero days of sick time to five days. Our insurance from injuries, what this comp does if being overcapacity and having large dogs, multiple cats, went from twenty-two thousand a year to fifty-two. And what this comp changes in five years, and then you can see the rest of the changes that happen. These are all things that we have to pass on to our three cities that we work with in order to stay, be able to pay the bills. But we have three ways that we pay bills. One is through the contacts. Two is our adoption fees. And three is through donation, donations that we receive through citizens and grants. So those are the ways that we try to maintain a zero balance budget. We know that we are in a crisis, animal crisis next slide. We are doing everything we can to help with the overpopulation, our capacity issue, the systematic problems that are happening in animal welfare. And although it sounds like we're in a place of despair, we have worked hard to stay as positive as possible and now work on education programs, work on public awareness, increase our volunteerism, our social media push to educate people, work on partnerships, outreach, to increase any other financial support that we can through grant writing and work on mental and physical enrichment for our cats as well as our dogs by using our volunteers and any other means that we can come up with through education, educating ourselves on other means and trying to be creative in other ways that we can partner with veterinarians locally for stay and move around. So we're hoping for better outcomes in the near future and we're hoping to educate you as well so that we can increase our partnerships here in Stanton with local businesses and your community to improve adoptions and pet ownership relationships.
Questions? Anyway, thank you very much for that presentation. I've had the pleasure of visiting your facility over the years and your operation is immaculately kept. I know that right now you're kind of overwhelmed because as you can see by the numbers, the increase in the population of animals, especially ones that are out on the street, has greatly increased. All I can say is that whatever we can do to help you always reach out to us, we support you. And I know that our residents are very happy to have you by your side.
Appreciate that very much.
We have been throughout the years, so maybe we can contact with you and maybe you guys could.
That was great.
Keep the word out there so we can get more dogs.
With our new community outreach manager, we would like that she is more than willing to come to any event. So let us in touch with whoever we need to.
I have to reiterate the dates that I've been here. Facility is immaculate. Lots of cats and dogs there. Have to get out there really quick, clarity out to the cats.
But if we find ourselves on the end of the road soon.
My next presentation is about the state community service department. I have this city update on the county resource service from our new building.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce community services coordinator Jessica Sanio to give an overview on the family resource centers and new programs and some really valuable programs that have been strengthened in our community residents.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Johnson Sanio and I'm the receiving coordinator here with the city of Stanton. And like Sunny mentioned, I will be sharing a little bit of the stand person. fact stands for Families and Communities Together and we are a network of sixteen family resource centers throughout Orange County. And fact is administered through the Orange County Social Services Agency for a five-year grant cycle. And this grant provides funding support for staffing and operational costs for our seven core services, which we'll be talking about shortly. So fact FRC is a community-based site run by collaborative partnerships. And again, I'll be talking a little bit more about it. But all of our fees are open to Orange County residents, your families, children eighteen and younger, or twenty-one and younger, if a child has a disability. Our programs and services are designed to strengthen families and raise resilience. And of course, once again, even though our programs are open to OC residents and families with children eighteen and younger, we will not turn away individuals, but we will also provide that information in the world, which I'll be talking about shortly. Our core services are family support services, domestic violence support, counseling and parenting education. Family support services are provided through the friendly center. And our case manager, our family support advocate, provides individualized plans for families in order to increase that resilience. Integral House provides our domestic violence support and we also have a parent's, sorry, personal empowerment program that's short-term for ten weeks. So they work on learning, education and safety for women. Our counseling is provided by the Boys and Girls Department of Party Growth. They provide crisis, individual youth group and family counseling, and it is also short-term for ten weeks. All of friends provides our parenting education and right now we're working on the adolescent series, but it is a ten-week program. Information and referral services are provided through the city of Stanton. Like I mentioned, if individuals come to the FRC, we can still provide them that information, although we can't provide the services on-site. And our information and referral specialist is the first point of contact to our families. And she will connect them to clients, she will connect her clients either to onsite services or if we don't have that service, she will lead them to the outside agency. Case management is provided as well. Case management is provided on-site and that is our weekly meeting and where our partners themselves need to make sure that our families are getting, are getting their needs met. And that's again where that individualized plan comes into action. And emergency assistance is financial assistance provided to our families during a crisis. And that is making sure that before we provide that assistance, there's a sustainability plan to ensure that families are getting that support through that challenge. And now I'm going to touch upon a couple of new ongoing programs. So this winter, we had the opportunity to participate in fact's SSA eligibility technician pilot program. So every fourth Monday of the month, we have an eligibility technician come on site to assist with patient assistance for health, pressure, medical. And we also partnered with the wellness on those programs. They provide a global unit for, for families and children, in school and children receive lung allergy and other, or asthma testing. We also partner with families to part out the developmental screenings for children zero to five, in which we do dental mission health screenings to bring. And the Cambodian family provides a daily program, which is empowered Southeast Asian and Latinx youth. So that's Project Alert and they provide mentorship and also local, local lead policy and advocacy. It is a twelve-week program. Ongoing, we also have citizenship classes and partnerships with the board. We also have parenting classes, like I mentioned, all of press provides those. And our food distribution is held here every third Monday of the month from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty. And our diaper distribution is hosted by the friendly center, one of our partners, and it's ongoing on the first Friday of every month. I'd also like to expand invitation and save the date for our annual open house event. This year it will be on Friday, September thirteenth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We'll be having tacos, elspethas, and of course the staff of our meeting room, as well as OC and B and the sympathy. We'll also have, of course, the resource fair and a lot of just information. But more importantly, we'll be welcoming the community on tour.
Any questions? Great presentation. And I will also tell you guys, the thing I'm really impressed with is our new booklet where we offer our community businesses, individuals to be sponsors. I like the updated version of that. I know you hope for that. And I think if we get our community. Thank you, Emma. Anyway, it was, it was well done and we begin a lot of positive response from our citizens, individuals and corporate. I just want to, I made your minutes. You guys do a great job down there and your staff is wonderful and I know that the people of our city, they usually consider you very happy. So thank you. Okay, that's for special presentations. All right, we're now moving to items on the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar may be acted on simultaneously unless a council board member requests a separate item. Is there anybody that wishes to pull something? Have we received any written correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to discuss any of the items as they come up? But you know, I'm going to be pulling. J L N.
Jay Allen.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll put the balance in two seconds. All endeavor. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you.
First item is nine J, the award of professional services agreement to SCA, MCA, LLC for Citywide Streets Service Services. Your question for sponsor.
Thank you. I just have a couple of concerns. My first one is, is that the bid was about a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Okay? And as you know, people that do streets with me have to pay for vetting wages. So if you take the linear mileage, which is about a hundred and forty-nine miles of curb plus parking is extra. And you take the time it takes to sweep plus overtime and you multiply that by ninety-five point two five, that's over two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm a little bit concerned because if you're bidding a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for a job and it's going to cost over two hundred thousand dollars if you pay for vetting wages, what about insurance, workman's compensation, equipment, natural gas, which is required to fuel it, and maintenance? I'm not sure how many companies want to run a business when you lose money. I'm also concerned because the city of Lake Forest, who used to retain this particular company, elected Athens to do the street sweeping. And the strike report simply said that the company SCA was not meeting the level of service for their city. So following that, I found several articles to where there have been lawsuits pending in court and in court to where SCA has not paid for vetting wages historically. And so I'm sort of concerned about the fact that we're giving ourselves answers. So it's my recommendation that we do not award this tonight, but we take you back to our staff and let them decide how they want to go. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Years ago, Alice and former councilman Rico negotiated our trash fee with CRNR. And as part of that negotiation, they were going to do free street sweeping as part of the deal. At the time, we were using Environmental Services, so we tried to stop our contract with Environmental Services early so that we could change over to CRNR. Well, Environmental Services got mad and we ended up in a lawsuit. But I think it was the Hoover's to go back to CRNR and potentially save six hundred thousand dollars. That would just. They didn't respond to the RFP, no. But that doesn't mean you can't pick up the phone and call.
If I may, visitor Mayor and I were also in, at the negotiating project with our manager not long ago. And at the time, we also bought us the possibility to run on street sweeping, starting to do our trash and didn't seem to me that they were, they were providing that service even when I mentioned it. So even though they did talk about it, they did, they, they, it was, I don't know who said it, but somebody had said that they would be able to provide that service. It never came to fruition. And I think that I, I, for some reason, I remember someone saying that it would be included for free, but I don't think that was.
Okay, it was for free, number one. I agree with that. However, that might have changed with the other meeting because that was the previous one that we had talked about. The second one was because it was entirely worked with a contract that we resigned with them, which, which we were going to expect that. The whole thing was is that contract is a different time than the sweeping services that we have now and yes, this contract right now. So I think it would be a recommendation from Mayor with Tim Warren that we do revisit that. I think it's something that would. I, the other thing that bothers me too is the two other bidders were almost double this. So if you have somebody that can do it for fifty percent less, and I'm concerned about the fact that if you're paying for vetting wages, that's more than what the bid was and they have a history of not paying for vetting wages, it just doesn't make any sense. But, you know, maybe it can be explained, maybe not. But I, at this point, I am not really so concerned about as I am visiting CRNR and see if we can't renegotiate to give this for free. Like we had talked about.
Fact, fact's report seems to say that they checked references with other cities that work with SCA and it was satisfactory and it was to a point where we could work with them. And I, I don't, I don't know why the, the price is the way it is. I'm glad that we're not paying more than we have to. I think that we should, I, I don't know if CRNR is going to give us this for free. That was on the question I was getting when we talked, when you were at our track. I don't think they will, to be honest. I, I had heard someone say that they were going to do this with a couple of.
From the Rose, the Rose of Las Vegas, my first artist on the. Do they have a representative in the search night that we could pay for?
They are here in the audience.
Sure.
Yes, Terry and Tyler, please. Terry, Tyler with SCA.
You could address some of your concerns.
Yes, be happy to. Thank you. My name is Tyler Haskell. I'm a district manager for Southern California for SCA. Thank you for having us. So to address your concerns, Mr. Mayor, council members, we were not disqualified from working with the city of Lake Forest. We actually just did not win that bid for that contract. As far as prevailing wages go and the data for this particular contract, I don't have it in front of me, but I would be happy to work with the city to provide kind of our cost assumptions to explain to you how that number makes sense for us. We do go through a bid process and a formal review to understand our numbers and ensure that they're correct to, to the contract. We do have, we're aware of the, the issue you brought up regarding a car I lost to their company. This is in Northern California. It's something that's going to the legal system right now. So I don't really have any additional comment for that. We did provide a written response to you all today, addressing some of these concerns. But we are aware of prevailing wages. We can do pay prevailing wages to our operators at the correct determination rate, well, well the fringe benefits as required. And we're confident in our ability to do the job. So we also did provide some references for some other municipalities we work with in the area and we are fully doing a great job. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I, Council, can I just make one point? So in fiscal year twenty-four, the purchase for a reissue for our vendor was a hundred and forty thousand dollars for that fiscal year. So the cost of this contract is significantly more, such as you're putting into your perspective, you know, the prevailing wages and cost, it is going up significantly more as you might expect with the increasing wages. So that's all I'll say is that our prior cost was a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Sure.
I mean, we, yeah, no, Mayor and Council, T. Rondeau Director of Public Works. Yes, so we, I mean, went through the bid RFP process, which is, you know, we press for proposals, vendors submit the proposals, we preview them, we then select rank them and then we select one and we call references and we will repeat process after that. So, I mean, it's better out with the RFP process that we do a lot of ways to do services for contractors and vendors in the city. Three.
You're correct in using.
That's correct.
You just post the RFP or do you actually send out emails about the RFP that have called you?
We do both. So it does get published on our website and sometimes depending on the RFP, we'll also send out emails and solicit vendors. But most of the times it's through the website that it's worth, it's more distraction.
Does CRNR respond to the RFP?
No, we didn't see the RFP.
You know, there's about two, if you've been to certified service state. Where are you at, what, three, five, how many?
Three, yes, three.
Okay, maybe we should call them and find them.
I think we should go, maybe they'll take our business.
I'd also like to include as standard in all of our city contracts, we do have provisions that allow the city to monitor operational performances. We have included damages clause. We have ability for the city to determine contracts if the services provided are not meeting the city's expectation. I just want to reiterate what our public works director stated is that we follow the city's purchasing and contract guidelines in procuring these services. There was nothing unusual about this process. The Director of Public Works did not act in the vacuum. We always have a committee that reviews all of our RFP proposals. We just wanted to reiterate for the Council that this base standard process utilized throughout the city when it's very professional service.
This is a national company, not just a local company, professional. And what they've done is they got out all the long scriptures and now they have the operator. So it's been sort of difficult for other people to start interchanging things. Now, I'm willing to give them an opportunity because if somebody wants to sweep, my sweep has to sweep the street. You know what I mean? For, for less, for less money than what it's costing, I don't know about that. I just hope they don't drive really fast and get all the trash and that they keep their promises, but we won't go until we give them that opportunity. I just hope that the contract that's written is one of which we can hold them accountable as they withhold us accountable for paying. So that being said, what's the pleasure of doing this? Okay, we have our first by Mr. Taylor, and second by Mr. Torres. Since we're spending time, that's how we move.
Councilmember Van. Yes, Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor, what's your word?
No.
Mayor Shocker.
Yes. Okay, moving on to my next.
Mr. Mayor, you had a contact to also four item nine L, which is the authority to advertise for construction for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, Citywide Alley List Service Project. Your questions for sponsor.
Thank you. This particular item, nine L, I would like to say that our alleys are in very bad shape and we need to do them. However, there's some alleys that we don't even use and they're all sort of landlocked by businesses and we have abandoned them or we did. Is that word?
Abandoned or?
Did I say the right word?
Yeah, abandoned.
We abandoned them, which gives the nearby property owners the opportunity to have them, maintain them and service them. Since a lot of these are not streets that we use, they're on auspices, I think it would be good of us to take a look at some of the alleys that we have, especially behind Beach Boulevard in the older part of town and see if the majority of the business owners would like to have those responsibility and take care of those. Now, what that does is it takes the responsibility of us having the resources to maintain them, but also gives a sense of security because they will put up fencing and gates there so that a lot of the crime and the problems that are going on in those alleys will be reduced, which will reduce the impact of our police department. So it's going to be a win-win for everybody.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Maybe if you go to the hip club.
They abandoned it.
Have you abandoned the mall?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So we don't have any responsibility to that. So we don't have any responsibility to that or you're not going to research this abandoned property?
Oh, no, we haven't done these yet. If you want.
What, they have two feet?
No, in the future.
I'm confused.
Okay, we have a bunch of alleys that we're going to. So my recommendation is we abandon them if the property owners want to take over the preservation and care of them. We no longer have a responsibility, we don't have insurance, and it is taken over by the businesses and accepted as part of their property.
Usually four alleys, but.
This, this probably pronounced only two, two alleys, I guess.
How many are the alley?
I would say probably one's a quarter mile and the other one is probably, I would say the same, quarter mile.
And, uh, I mean, they're not streets.
I'd just like to interject that this is not the item on the agenda for the council to like to review this request. That would allow staff to provide some more additional information. Do you get requests to abandon alleys? The city does not always say yes because on a case-by-case basis, there are certain factors that make causes to want to retain control of the alley. So I'm happy to work with staff to bring back more information if the council is interested in considering abandonment of alleys. We can, we can take action on this item, but we can modify staff's recommendation to hold on initiating the project until we come to concluding. But you can give us approval once we do, or you can table this item, bring it back after we have a discussion regarding the potential abandonment of. Other than council wants to consider the two specific alleyway portions that are on this particular staff report or something greater.
I see, so how much is this cost?
This is estimated at probably five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
Let me look at some staff.
It's a thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so if we don't do them right now and we come back and we have it on it, and we decide to abandon them. Then we can't say you're getting this, but we're gonna have to fix it up. Is that correct? Would that kind of way that works?
Generally, I would say that these street. So I would say that these alleys are down in, by Dell and Lola, that's one of them. And then the other ones down here on Orange Wood and Center of Bluey, from that people.
And one of the things that, that we can do, kind of, is the fact that you can actually make that part of the abandonment that, or if. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to say that we don't support nine eleven at this time and we bring it back for the discussion after staff.
Clarification, because on the staff report, it says that there's no dispo impact. That all we're asking, we're not actually committing to any contractor. Just, we're, we're just advertising. So it doesn't actually cost anything, they, why not advertise? That way, you decide that you need to be responsible with the alley that you own, it's ready to go. From that process, because there is no dispo impact. Isn't if we all vote yes to it? That way, we're not blaming things from public works. Should we decide to be responsible with the land that we own and do the maintenance that's required for it as, you know, cities, taxpayers. Trust us maintaining that land over there.
Where are the exact alleys?
Uh, one, one is up by Lola and Dell, which between on that area over there. And the other one's on just south of Orange Wood and Center of Bluey.
So they're residential?
They're residential, yes, hopefully they're residential.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and support you, I'll just, but I do want to come back and visit the ones in the business community. I think that would be a smart, since you're residential, I'll always support that. You want to make a push now?
Right. And all the recommended actions.
Okay.
Can you do a voice vote with surprise, all in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Shocker. Item passes five zero.
Okay, what's next?
We have. I know item from the calendar, which is item nine N, a war.
Go ahead.
A war contract to interior demolition team for the eighty nine forty Pacific Avenue demolition and abatement project. In the interest of public health, safety, welfare. Mr. Mayor, your questions to staff.
Thank you. I just want to make it clear to everyone. At this particular time, we're, we're going to be abating of these particular, of this particular presence, okay? It has become a health and safety issue. It has been a problem because of the transient occupancy. And the fact that we've had fires there, we've had death there, we've had drug dealers there. We've had unsanched conditions there. And so for us to leave that building up is endangering the people that live nearby. And I think it removes us our responsibility at this time to take this action for the health and safety of our community. And anytime, any type of these domiciles that we control happen, I think we should maybe take the same action. So that being said, I'm going to do the nine N. All in favor? I, the lady opposed, the lady abstained. Against consent calendar, all right, public hearings. Ten A, public hearing regarding request to modify fees for traffic violator apprehension program.
Mayor, in evening, Uncle Mayor and state councilmembers. Tonight, we have for you is again, as Mr. Mayor reported, a public hearing regarding request to modify fees for the traffic violator violator apprehension program. Short term is two thousand, so don't forget that. This evening, before city council's inspiration is the adjustment to back to the black market operating costs. The recommended action for this evening is asking council members to identify the items in the section. Conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number two four twenty nine, remaining sure its order department to adjust to back from one forty four to one seventy. That concludes staff report. I mean, we're pretty much.
Okay, listen. Your motion?
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address item ten? Okay, heard none, propose a public hearing and bring it back for motion? Here we have a motion second.
Now, we see a poll, although maybe motion by councilman Taylor, a section by Mayor Clinton Warren. Now, let's see. Yes, councilwoman, councilwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Clinton Warren.
Yep.
Mayor Shocker. Evening, item passes five zero.
Item eleven A, this is approval documents one one four four, and since the city council introduced the standard California, amending section two oh ten four, that's supposed to be all. The standards for code pertaining to standards for alcohol sales in mixed use overlay area.
Yes, Mayor, again, that is me, for the, you can have all of your, and your council members. For you to have approval for this number one one four four. I will read the title out again, is to have the ones of the city council, the state standard, amend the section two zero point four zero zero point zero three zero. The standard is for code pertaining to standards for alcohol sales in mixed use overlay areas. Sports was introduced at regular city council meetings of July third, twenty twenty fourth, but our last meeting. Recommended action for this evening is that the council is ordering, ordering that for the Z I and adopt ordinance number one one four four. That concludes staff report. I mean, we're pretty much.
It does, I'm willing, certainly.
And that's, we have a poll, we have a motion by Mayor from Tim Warren, a second by councilman Taylor. Man, that's councilwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Clinton Warren.
Yep.
And Mayor Shocker.
Yes.
And sir, item passes five zero.
Okay, new business, item twelve A, this is consideration of ordinance number one one four six, amending chapter two oh five oh of the status quo. To update regulations for temporary uses. Put that to you.
Close, we have.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Chris. I forgot you have your laundry.
Good evening, nice meeting for this one.
What do you do? Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. At a regular meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, the council briefly discussed special rent and temporary use process. Before directly staff to review this regulation in comparison to newer trends and return of approved amendments that would support. Staff review chapter twenty point five four zero extending this whole code, which regulates special rents and temporary uses. As a result, the draft ordinance was prepared to propose several amendments, provide an additional clarity to review process. And to introduce a new category of temporary uses that is applied to the new trends, like pop-up on it that helps promote shop. The proposed amendment would allow up to two such events per month and establish additional operational requirements to traditionally that would increase impacts to spreading uses. The planning commission held a public hearing on July seventeenth to review the proposed amendments in the ordinance. The commission was supportive of the amendment and update, and the other updates proposed, but voted to make one alteration to the proposed ordinance. The planning commission discussed a existing useful code regulations, which currently allow a maximum of six events per year. And expressed concern that the proposed amendment, which could, could allow up to a maximum of twenty four events per year. And discussed allowed if this was too much of an increase for the current area. The commission suggested to allow maximum of twelve events per year. And if after the first year, there were no impacts to surrounding uses, another amendment can be proposed to increase the number of events. The planning commission approved resolution twenty five sixty eight with this amendment and recommendation to the city council. During this discussion, the planning commission acknowledged that the city council had the purview to further, to accept their recommended amendment or propose further changes. As presented tonight, the proposed ordinance will allow a maximum of twelve events per year. I would also like to note as a matter of clarification, attachment B to the staff report is on a commission resolution twenty five sixty eight. The last page of this resolution has two errors. For the record, I would like to clarify that the resolution will be revised to reflect that Chair Adams and Commissioner Sanchez were absent from that meeting. And additionally, the signature line will be revised to reflect that Vice Chair Fornier will be acting chair of that meeting. This is the staff report and I don't know if we have the right.
Okay. Okay, listen. Right on.
Firstly, I really appreciate that the planning commission had a little discussion on the possible impacts. The number of, it's almost around the smallest volume of light shows in there. And I noticed that it had recommended that we do twelve a year and after one year, consider increasing it if we're working no negative impacts. At the time, did they discuss what those criteria were or what the threshold is for when they could be increased or decreased or whatever?
So a lot of the concerns that they were raising was in regard to a potential traffic or property impact, potential void tax or any increased hog surfer. Those were the discussion items like the commission. They did note that they had seen any other, other events in the first center. There is a concern that there is a portion of the change.
Was the look three or two one?
It was three zero, we had two X.
So for. Three oh thirty nine, seven, we're talking about. They could have one outdoor a month, a month, a month. And then what about all of this, this inside revenue?
So this was particularly for the outdoor cause of the road design together was treated as one. So they would be subject to specials with standards for. And I believe that's up to four events per year for the.
Okay, so.
Well, I'm sorry, just to specify, the, the commission was specifically wanting twelve per year, not one per month. So they did want to allow that flexibility, they wanted to have two a month or.
So right now, the maximum they can have a year is what?
Twelve. Oh, I'm sorry, currently, or the current limit?
Yeah, but what's it, if we pass this?
Twelve, it would be twelve.
Or a month?
It could average that.
Okay, whatever happened to the twenty four?
So the, the original proposal that was just sent into the planning commission did have two per month, which would be a total of twenty four. And that is what the planning commission expressed concern. Currently, they're allowed six, they would be allowed up to twenty four. And that, that's what was concerning for them. So they need the recommendation to reduce it down to twelve per year, allowing that flexibility to do one per month. Or, you know, have more during holidays or other events and go some month without, but they did want to move it to twelve.
Well, it's to my knowledge, we never, never had anybody complain about events that they've had there. In fact, some of us have had participated in events there. There was the murder in New Year. We had the fire people there, you know, giving away Christmas toys. We had Mickey and Minnie Mouse, those people there. But, and then they've also had sort of like the mizors where they give away, you know, they sell clothes and stuff like that. But go outside food sale, you could probably take them away. So I honestly wonder, we can't give them two a month. If there's, there are no complaints, I mean, it's a very active center. And I think by giving them two, that means, I think they have like thirty vendors in there. That means that each vendor can participate in something throughout the whole thing under the auspices of two a month. So if you take two a month and divide it by thirty different vendors, that's not a lot.
Well, it is within the council's review, we can accept the planning commission's recommendation or you can make additional amendments if necessary. I can go back to the twenty four, if any other adjustments are operating. No amendment that are necessary. If this was in review, the planning commission did understand that when they made their vote, but they did just want it to be part of their, their recommendations.
And I would also like to add to the record, just so any residents who spoke with me directly don't feel like their concerns were acknowledged. I have received complaints about the events on my initial, about my work with the city about two years ago. So there were concerns about parking, we did send out code enforcement to at least one of the events. rodeo thirty nine, observing all the requirements that were required for their special end for usage. Since then, I personally have not received complaints, but I do want to be very clear. I did receive them initially, did respond to them. So just in case anybody from that neighborhood is listening, I don't want them to feel that the alley is counting their input.
Great. I don't think what the planning commission is back is with doubling the amount of events they have. And, you know, we can see how it goes for a year. And, you know, if everybody's happy with it, that's fine, that's fine. And they're not, well, we'll keep it twelve or kind of act it on the six. But if that way they could adjust.
It just, I'm sure council is aware, we do have other studies from the review, remind in the audience if you would like to ask any questions.
Right here.
I'd like to just go. I'd be all appreciative. But we sit at the time of the.
Well, the thing is that you, there's been no complaints. But you have, I mean, there's no way that I'm not gonna hear a complaint or something. The only complaints they had is, the very first one, they had a long caveat, they said that there was some good questions. Because our staff were not checking it out. Basically, what it is, is like college kids or people that have certain hobbies, it's kind of like a bizarre type thing. And I think that we, I think that the parking situation, we may not survive it, but I think also that we need to look at, oh, sorry, the parking in the future. I've been trying to do now, and I think we all have.
I do remember.
Is already. Yeah, very much. So I'm gonna make a motion that we amended to twenty four.
Mr. Mayor, this is a my position to use on code, so we should be opening it up for public comments as well. And we would.
But given, we didn't have this under public comments.
Yeah, I, I think I.
Okay, but do you have a right to speak?
We still should just follow the motion. And it's okay to, if there's anyone in the member of the audience for each item.
Yeah, but they usually do that under all occasions, but they couldn't.
But we give an opportunity for any member of the public to respond to any item.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak on item twelve A? Don't be shy.
Can you just come up to my phone? Will you say your name? We do have three minutes, sir.
Hi, my name is Austin Rur. The Mid-Florida Rodeo Thirty-Nine.
Hold it as well. Whatever's in your ears.
Um, in the last, I think, two events we had, we were asked, or the people who are hosting the market or curating the markets or events were asked to get a different type of permit early. I was trying to look at my email to see exactly what it was. I was just wondering if this passed for the twelfth, the next calendar year review for next year, would they still be, would be able to apply to that other permit too as well? To allow for more activations. I was trying to look at my email right now. Could my most special vendor temporary use permit?
If I may, I believe that the conclusion is that in years past, it was processed as a special event permit, which actually lends it only to four per year. This should have been categorized as a temporary use permit, which allows six per year. And it's just a different type of law that's been found now. It would still be temporary.
Yeah, I'd like to see something. So Paul from Rodeo Thirty-Nine as well. I'd just like to say, you know, like as operating business in Stanford, competing with so many other cities. If you go to Garden Grove, I think every weekend it's blocked. Every weekend it's blocked on. Car show, something. They have the amphitheater and everything. So, you know, we need the help. You know, we need the help. So the twenty-four, you know, what would we want? If you give us the twelve A, you know, we need to we're competing with we're getting nothing as, you know.
I'll ask you a question.
Yeah.
How many vendors do you have there?
We have close to thirty. We have two, two just opened. Blue Bowl is a new business that's coming in, so close to thirty.
If every business, let's say thirty, they have a special event under your auspices, right?
Yes.
You wouldn't be able to do them all for a year, would you?
You wouldn't be. And there's another thing. There's another thing to take into account. What if crunch, what, I mean, yeah, what if client fitness one? And express one? What does that mean? Right, so it's hard to we need, we need what we're asking.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a motion for twenty-four. Do you have a second? Thank you, Durrin. Hold the call, please.
Is there any question? I'm so sorry. Quick question. So right now, the planning commission is recommending allowing up to twelve per year to observe and make amendments after one year. But we still do allow up to twenty-four per year to observe and make changes that needed after a year. Would that be reasonable? And then within that one year, this temporary allowance of twelve, I mean twenty-four, if there's something, if something bad happens, we can have that productivity, that culture. So we can need to amend the
I would, yeah, that's fine. I would support that. But we could do that. We need to have assessments.
I think it's important to have staff on top of it. I think it's important to have staff on top of it as well. You know, if we, if we are, you know, say it's night, we should have staff following Friday on the evening and all the shopping that's going to Rodeo Thirty-Nine. And we're going to have somebody looking over for it and we won't have to go to the data all of a sudden.
I mean, yeah, what I'm trying to say, Tom, is that if we give them twenty-four a year and we're going to evaluate within the year, during that year, it becomes a problem anytime we bring that back. It's kind of an umbrella that you're talking about. I don't have a problem with that. But I do want to let you know that you do have the ability to Okay, hold the call, please. Without amendment?
Can you please clarify the amendment for staff?
Sure. We're changing the planning commission's recommended and recommendations to allow twelve per year to sorry, twenty-four per year to observe any potential impact. And if no impacts are noted or whatever, regardless of what effect or if, we will make amendments as needed after.
Okay, so, so just for clarification for everyone, our action will be to amend the ordinance, but we will leave it as is. So if at the end of one year, there's no concerns, we won't break any draft or action back to the council. The state ordinance amendment will stand. If we notice issues, count them, stop operating that back to council. We consider the new amendment at that time.
Okay, and then the key is to make sure that you track the issue back.
So right, right. Hold the call, please.
Without amendment action and the motion by Mayor Shaver and the statement by Councilmember Tiers will stand. Okay, we'll have to vote, vote, Councilmember Van? Yes, Councilmember Doyes?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
And Mayor Tinnor?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaver?
Yes.
You have passed five zero.
Twelve B, an ordinance of jumper ten point oh four, Title Ten, the city of Stanton, the code implementing the speed limits consistent with current engineering and traffic surveys and finding and accident easy up from California and in Farwell, all
Mayor and council, today I want to present Aviez Garcia. He's the assistant city engineer. He would be the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to present the engineering traffic survey of the city of Stanton. I want to give you guys a little bit of a background to what we're doing here. Speed limits are, in California, are governed by the California Vehicle Code. City has produced and set speed limits between fifteen and forty-five miles per hour. The NTS, Engineering Traffic Survey, have done every seven years or fourteen years of an engineering disturbance, no significant changes in roadway. Elements of engineering and traffic surveys are prevailing speeds as determined by traffic engineering measurements. And the eighty percentile that you guys have most likely heard about is usually what stands out, accident records, which is that highway traffic and road traffic conditions not really apparent to the driver. And they're conducted on segments of roadways that have underdamped and been changed last review. The summary to all of this, and really as a quick and short presentation, that all of these speed limit policies will remain without change. Good thing for the state. And these states have been running just fine according to California Vehicle Institute segments at resident districts of at Santa Rosa Street, from Orangewood Avenue to Chapman. And then from Chapman South, to Glanston Avenue. Circus Avenue as well, from Knott to Western. All of that means is that there are posted speed limits on both segments. And post-speed limits at Dell Street from Chapman Avenue to Barley and from Orangewood Avenue. At Orangewood Avenue from Western to East, the East San Antonio. Of that, I'd like to thank you and one last statement here. This engineering traffic survey was a conductive accordance with procedures established by State of California. And work herein was authorized and by the city and was performed by a consulting firm of Hartalking Cradle, Hartalking Cradle Incorporated. And the goal of the review was twofold. The first was to review any new roadway segments to determine if the speed limit posted should be recommended. Second of all, the determination as to whether changes in previous conditions have occurred, where older speed limits should be modified. That
Good question. Please.
Thank you.
Mostly just a comment, because I know that as council members, we hear all the time of residents that too fast, you guys got to lower the speed limit. And this proves to us that the speed limit is just right. Based on studies that, that the data driven, that what we have in our city is actually just right.
Just for that too. When, um, the insert speed when we re-raid cereals from not to Western, I guess, do we make the lanes more narrow to, to stay down traffic? I've heard that with a lot of residents.
We did, uh, so we did a road diet between cereals between Western to East Boulevard. We did a road diet. So we basically, you know, miracle, we had on the other side of cereals. And so that's, that's what we did. It's more of a considered road diet. So now you have like a lane in the middle that you can let it turn, then let it move down there. Okay.
And the motion by Mayor Tinnor, that he's by Councilmember Tiers, we'll vote, Councilmember Van? Yes, Councilmember Doyes? Mayor Tinnor?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaver?
Yes.
You have passed five zero.
We're now on twelve C. This is a word professional services master agreement with Oracle. America Inc., Oracle NetSuite. The government approved professional services agreement. It gave us our LLP for accounting services and approved the appropriation of our funds.
Good evening, our finance director, she'll handle it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, everyone joining in person or virtually. The city entered into a professional services agreement with Springbrook approximately twenty years ago. Over the last twenty years, we have upgraded the software to their latest versions and they, as they have available. The last upgrade completed in twenty twenty, which wasn't really an upgrade, meaning we didn't receive any additional value in tech, from a technology standpoint. We simply moved the system from being housed on the city's servers located here at City Hall to the cloud to facilitate staff access to the finance system to be able to work efficiently during the COVID nineteen pandemic when City Hall was locked down for a period of time and when we were on a hybrid work schedule. The functionality and technology of this system is outdated and nearly obsolete. Springbrook is no longer devoting any development resources to improve this system. The city council approved three hundred thousand dollars for the implementation of a new system with the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget this past June. Rather than spend our limited staff resources going through a time-consuming request for proposal process, staff decided to leverage the resources of our local government community by completing this procurement through a cooperative purchase agreement. A cooperative purchase is when another government agency awarded a contract to a vendor through a competitive request for proposal process. Staff is recommending utilizing the National Association of State Procurement Officials, known as NASPO, cooperative agreement in accordance with the city's purchasing policy for this procurement, which allows cooperative purchasing. Attachment B is the addendum that the city manager would execute upon city council approval to have the city participate in this cooperative purchase. And to be able to do that, the city would require authorization from the governing agency. And attachment A does have authorization from the Health or Department of General Services Authorization letter, authorizing the city of Stanton to participate. To decide on Oracle, the finance, the finance team looked at cooperative purchases for, these are ERP systems, enterprise resource planning systems that are available through the Orange County Procurement Alliance, through Sourcewell and other cooperative bidding resources that local government agencies use to identify which ERP systems were competitively bid that would allow for cooperative purchasing. So we didn't just go with one vendor. We narrowed it down to three vendors and we solicited, we looked at their demonstrations with our software. Our tied of finance team consisting of myself, the accounting manager, the accountant, and our senior accounting technician viewed the software demonstrations and the presentations from all of these software vendors to see which would be the most price competitive and more user friendly, not just for finances, our finance staff, but for all staff in the city. And as a result of our software demonstrations and the results of our inquiries to local government agencies located in Southern California who are undergoing an implementation of Oracle right now, or just completed this spring and summer. The unanimous decision of the finance team was to select Oracle Americas product, which is Oracle NetSuite for government. It is based on the technology of the system. They're one of the top software companies in the world and their and their user friendliness, not just for finance women, but for staff. So we have a lot of staff who only come into city halls, do their electronic timesheet. The, this software is capable of making those reviews and workflows and timesheets and anything that a director or line supervisor might need to be done on a mobile device, a service pro, their phone. They don't have to come into city hall just to do their timesheet every two weeks. So it's very user friendly. The technology is advancing. So what we have in our staff report is we have a number of documents if the city council authorize the staff to proceed. The procurement with Oracle involves two contracts. One is a contract just for the implementation, the one-time cost for the software. And that is not to exceed two hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. That is not to exceed. That means if the hours and the expenses of the team are less, the city is only billed for actual hours and actual expenses for how efficient we are in getting this implemented. The second agreement is an actual professional services agreement for the use of the software. So it's a five-year agreement that is billed at sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars a year. So the first year, this first fiscal year, we would be paying Oracle two hundred and sixty-three thousand, three fifty-four, not to exceed, plus sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then in the future years of the agreement, we would build that into the city's proposed operating agreement, like we do for our, you know, currently for our Springbrook software. Again, Harrison, this fiscal year, we paid Springbrook in July approximately sixty thousand dollars for the use of their dinosaur product. And it's been going up about five percent every year. And for this five-year term, we are being billed at flat sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then we have an option, a one-time, three-year renewal option at the end of that five years would have a CPI increase if the city council at that time were wanting to renew it. So to make this implementation project successful, it takes a lot of staff resources. You know, we have a department of four full-time staff on the accounting division team. That is, two of those people are the manager and myself. And so it is our time that is going to be spent mostly on developing this and looking, talking to our peers who have had successful and challenging, I guess they're all challenging, but I would say efficient and smooth implementation processes. The key is you need a dedicated project manager keeping this project moving along, whether that's an in-house person or that's a third party person. After speaking to the city manager who's gone through this process at our previous location and my accounting manager who also went through this process at her previous location and just, you know, talking to her about what went right, what went wrong, she would like to be the project manager doing approximately twenty hours a week of her time to being the project manager and working with Oracle and their team on the implementation. Obviously, that means that we need to backfill her time so that the day-to-day accounting manager duties can still be done efficiently and employees get paid on time, vendors get paid on time, and the city's day-to-day business goes on while we have this huge project. If you recall, we had used Davis Bar LLP, an independent CPA firm located in Irvine a couple of different times in the four years I've been here. And that person served at one point as our interim accounting manager when the position was vacant at one point. And then also came and helped us when we had a staff shortage for helping us close our books on time when we were having turnover a couple of years later. So this person happens to be available for twenty hours a week through, we're expecting about Oracle said that they're averaging ten months of an implementation period. I think that is wonderful. I've been talking to most organizations, it's taken them one to two years. I think if we have a dedicated city staff person working on it, I think it's reasonable that we could be live by the end of December twenty twenty-five. So we have the professional services agreement with Davis Bar at twenty hours a week through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to backfill the accounting managers' time, which is also not to exceed. So if we implement earlier, we just, we'll terminate the contract at that time. But that value is out to a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So on page four of the staff report, I have a So on page four of the staff report, I have a chart identifying if you were to add the two agreements related to Oracle, which is one year of our subscription cost that we have to pay in fiscal year 24-25, plus the one-time implementation fee, plus the budget for Davis Bar, which even though it's a, it's going to cross over to next fiscal year, we would like all of that budget accounted for and reserved now for going forward with this project. The total budget for the implementation is four hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And we have a budget of three hundred thousand dollars. So we're asking for an appropriation of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. We are in the process of our year-end close. We're about eighty-five percent complete, all of our venture costs for fiscal year 23-24 are reflected in our finance system as of the drafting of this staff report. And so as of the drafting of this staff report and the fiscal impact, the funding of that would, could come from our general fund special projects, assigned fund balance category, if you will. A lot of the limited-term positions that were funded and reserved in the fiscal year 23-24 budget came under budget by quite a lot. So there's definitely over five hundred thousand dollars of realized savings from the general fund special projects assigned fund balance. So we're pressing the appropriation come from that set of money to complete this project. That completes my staff report. Mr. Scott Weir with Oracle America is here. I think he left a pamphlet with information about what company at your spots up there, if you would like to meet him or if you have any questions, he's in the audience. So, yeah.
So, we are going to take a citizen accounting manager and says you're fifty, but you just said twenty, which is?
Fifty percent of her time, twenty hours we give her time, which is fifty percent of her forty-hour week.
And Davis Bar LLP, is that going to take us through December the 25th?
It is.
Okay, so?
And that would be starting approximately September. That person is finishing up a project between a couple of other North Orange County agencies right now. So it would be starting around the end of September. There's about a three-week lead time between when, if the council to approve this tonight and Oracle getting, you know, their implementation team ready. So she probably would be starting realistically September 30th. But yes, it would take us ideally through the end of 2025.
So does Davis Bar bring sub-staffing to ensure the accounting manager's floor responsibilities?
No, the contract is specifically specified in the contract. It is a specific individual who is a retired, her career involved working, she works for the accounting firm, but she's a retiree and has worked her whole career in local government for a number of cities and special districts, and it is specifically her. It is her, so her high level, you know, thirty-plus years, actually, I have thirty, no, she has like forty or something. So forty years of experience, and she has specifically worked at the city of Stanton for two different three-month stints in just my four-and-a-half-year stretch. So she knows our system, she knows Springbrook, she's used Springbrook at a couple, at at least one other special district that she's provided consulting services for. But they're not bringing, it's not just anyone, it's a specific individual on the contract.
So simply she'll be taking the job of our city account manager?
Exactly, the accounting manager.
Where are that detailed?
Correct. It's both going to require reviewing the work of the accountant, reviewing the payroll every two weeks, a lot of her day-to-day routine things so that she can work on the more complex transaction.
Or to identity teaching our staff ERP system?
No, because our current accounting manager is going to be the expert, and she's going to be the one implementing the software and together working with Oracle and doing the training and implementation of it.
Okay, so the citizen accounting manager is going to implement ERP system?
She's going to be the project manager, I'll be overseeing it, but she's going to be the day-to-day person who gets to be in a million meetings and give me a list and say, make these decisions.
While she's doing that, we have Davis Bar.
Yes, because we don't want her to get burned out and leave us in the middle of it.
Okay, how do you feel about it?
I feel great about it. I think that I, we, when we consulted with the city manager about different options, some cities will hire a IT consulting company to be that middle person. When I talked to agencies who did that, they're like, it's great until you're implemented. And then you're like, wait, how did we set up this piece? And like the expert who set it up is no longer here. And then there could be a bio net because now you're adding a middleman, city, what do you want to do? Oracle's asking this IT consultant, what do you want to do? The IT consultant has to then go ask me and or the accounting manager, what do you want to do where, you know, you have the expert once you go live, if there's nuances, who knows behind the scenes how different things have been set up?
Any questions?
Yeah, it sounds like transitioning to this new system is going to cost us about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of beyond the sixty-six thousand a year. But what we're getting in return, from what I'm hearing, is more efficiency, digitalization, people don't have to come into the office to do timesheet and upload the data. I'm assuming they'll have a more environmentally friendly workplace where things are digitalized, you don't hear that much of a paper trail, relaxed, better word. If you had to put a dollar amount on what that is worth, what would you say that is?
I think just the reporting improving, just from directors at the director level and just from me, if you look at the monthly financial report, that's in your consent calendar, that is all manual Excel spreadsheets that take, whether it's a finance director, and usually it's a finance director due to workload issues, about twenty hours plus to export from Excel and make it be readable to you. So let's just say, you know, in our implementation process, it's the reporting feature we could probably set up from what we've seen, where this is just a report, kind of like the check register you see, it's just a system-generated click that the monthly financial report you receive for the general that has a reporting fund will be a click. So if we're saving twenty hours of the finance director's time per month, wow, that helps my quality of life, but that also is dollars, right? Other special projects can then take higher priority than me exporting and trying to put together a monthly report. And I know that even directors who have been here a short time or directors who have been here a long time, whenever they need to find something in the system, they ask me, not because they're incapable of it or staff hasn't shown them how, it is hard to find things and pull data out. I'm used to a place where Public Works had a report that said, Public Works Budget Report is a click, and it shows them all their revenues, budget to actual, it's a report that shows them all their expenditures, budget to actual, what their POs, the system doesn't do that without a manual process that we currently have. Have them, one, take ownership, two, have confidence in how to find something. But I think the thing that really sold me on this, because of course, all the different softwares we saw said, oh, we have recording, oh, we have recording. What sold me on this is the grant management piece and the project management piece. Right now, it is very, very manual. I have a project management module, it has some numbers, I have the finance system, it has some numbers, but I can't marry them together. And the grants and then the projects can't be the same. So it's a very manual Excel process to kind of report, which of these CIP projects are funded by which projects. And Oracle is very sophisticated in how they do things. I think I'm most excited about the interface with the different systems we have. So when we first asked for this project, we asked for a project that would include HR and finance. But Oracle already has a direct integration with Nioga, which is what our human resources staff use for their onboarding, for their re-proving. And so it can just interplay with the finance system and really facilitate the employee set part of when there is a new employee who's hired and needs to be K through payroll. And this contract does include hours to integrate with our community services civic program. Right now, it's a very manual process of staff having to data entry things. So we're going to, whether it's an automatic integration or we get to export and import information, it's going to be great, and that'll help a lot of reconciliation and communication back and forth between our two departments about, well, our system shows this, your system shows that, and there's going to be more of a real-time connection. And we don't have it in this contract right now, but we do have, it's kind of right, we're doing this first before the permitting software RP is done, because we can already have talked to the crystal about the possible scoring criteria on firms that are already automatically integrate with Oracle versus those that might take more hours to integrate, then we can have our permitting system and our finance system have a more automated, not manual process. So I think there's just a lot of savings, I think the quality of the reports to staff and to the councils may be more timely and is going to be more reasonable. And this is our last year of our Open Gov budgeting platform, the contract expires June 30th. And this scope of work includes a budgeting platform, that there's not too many finance systems where the budgeting platform looks very user-friendly, is at the same level of service as Open Gov and this one. There's lots of that in this and just doing your timesheets on a mobile device, but I think for the people who are in the field, that's maybe they're going to be excited about that part, but then there's also a lot of other people.
How is, one of the biggest savings would be a thousand dollars with Davis Bar.
That's what I'm hearing. Yeah, that's great.
That's where all the money's really going to come, not so much up here, but just within our stretch.
And eventually, limited-term staff positions do go away, so this kind of prepares us for what happens to that workflow, right? Those don't become forever funded positions.
But Oracle also does these types of systems for hospitals and all kinds of different businesses and stuff. And NetSuite that this also has the subreddit for was a market leader that Oracle bought. So there's a lot of history there. But the best part is Oracle has a man, I've been to Oracle headquarters in San Jose, they have a man-made lake with their racing boats out in the man-made lake. It's gorgeous.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, but, okay, this time, we would like to hear from Oracle. And the last time I heard from Oracle, it was very interesting because it was at the Oshers Annual Meeting where they talked about unfunded liability and how much it was going to cost me. So give me some good news.
Hello, I'm Arnold Mayor. I just turned off.
David's on.
I've got a strong voice, if that's okay. Yeah, so Arnold Mayor and Council, I really appreciate you being here. This is an exciting time in Oracle. This solution is designed specifically for smaller, medium-sized government agencies. I mean, and this is in a super secure, the most secure cloud out there. This is the same cloud that CIA, CIA, the FBI, the IRS, branches of the military. And having a secure cloud is so important. You don't have to look back even a year where San Bernardino County Sheriff was in somewhere, right? Is that better? Okay, there we go. And so, you know, being in a secure environment, having a true native cloud operating where the data is all shared between modules, it's just going to be so much more efficiency and effectiveness for the city of Stanton. We're excited about it. Any questions for me?
Well, I think you made our accounting department, finance department very happy, so please keep them happy. Thank you.
How can you be happy in your department?
Okay, we have recommendation items number one, two, three, four, five, and six is your motion. How?
We have a question by Councilmember Deirdre Almam, who will hold both both and, yes. Mayor Tim Hort, and Mayor Shabbard.
Yes.
Right at half past five zero.
Okay, it's, it's that time in the evening for oral communication. At this time, the public may address the city council. Regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on non-agenda items, you have three minutes. Okay, our first speaker is Nicholas Gibbs.
Mayor, the working out, Mayor Shabbard, members of the council. Good to be back here again. You've received emails from me and those of the staff regarding the sign issues. I didn't know that, you know, I run for school board, last time was four years ago, and apparently the sign ordinance got amended two years ago and nobody told me. And I filed for, to run for school board here, GTUSD covers two-thirds of the STEM. But I do think that there's for the future. I want to ask the council to please consider revising the sign ordinance for political signs. We only have a short window of time of about sixty days to put these signs up. And yet, on a four-to-one vote, you restricted the signs down to six square feet, which is okay in a residential neighborhood, but when you get two busy streets and stuff, it's not enough. Over in Garden Grove, it's thirty-two square feet. Other cities are thirty-two square feet. We have a First Amendment. This isn't an issue of Democrats or Republicans. This is an issue of being fair, ethical, upholding the Constitution's First Amendment rights. I consider the First Amendment very important. And four, five people or more that gave me permission to put my signs up, get a notice, you know, because my signs are either too big or they were out before the, whatever ordinance change was, and that put a damper on them. And I've gone back to them, the city attorney who's here has given me emails, and I tell them, hey, it's been approved, but they don't want to put them up anymore. So it has a chilling effect. And the issue is, we shouldn't be, you know, the state law is thirty-two square feet for signs. When the city becomes more restrictive than the state, then you're basically whittling away because the average person is running for office, if you don't have a lot of money, like I don't have a lot of money. I'm depending on signs to help get my message out. I can't afford to hire a big team and do all this stuff and send out expensive mailers. I'm depending on the signs. When you restrict it down to six square feet, which is a little bitty-bitty sign compared to thirty-two square feet, you know, when you're on Cotella or Chapman or some other street around here, you need a bigger sign. So we need to err on the side of upholding the Constitution, not restricting it. And I'm speaking, of course, for myself, but I just, for anything that's in the future, we should be able to do this with the state laws, which is thirty-two square feet. Consider this put on the agenda for the future, and I appreciate your visit, being a good city.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to note for the record that we did receive one e-public comment, which is available on the dial for your reading.
We don't have to read that.
No, sir.
Close the hearing. We have no written communications.
My apologies. You are correct, we have no written communications. However, during the proceedings, we did receive one after the publication of the agenda that is also available to you via email on the dial this evening.
We have two.
One written comment and one e-public comment. She's correct. We do not have any, but it will be recorded with the record. So we do not have to, but it will be recorded with the record.
We have two. All right, um, Mayor, Sheriff, Council, Agency, Authority, Initiative, please. Commander reports. The man is signing him. Yes, Karen?
We've had a mosquito, it's on Facebook and, um, it's on our website. And so, I mean, the area, Dale, Chapman, San Jose, San Jose, the area of Chapman, I had. Uh, within that area, the mosquitoes have kind of taken over and they have put out traps. And that's how they kind of know this, they do traps all over the county. We're running a little bit high and, um, there's been, people getting really sick from this too. Uh, West Island, all that stuff. So it is going around the whole country, but, uh, certain areas here, they will be spraying, uh, truck sprayers uh, from 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM. That's eight, that's really?
We are going to have our social media and website.
And, but it's not harmful to, to people, it's non-toxic. Hopefully we'll get it under control. We're not the only area. Police and some police, some police and other areas.
We have our national, it's been so long since we've been with our dark. We had our national live out, San Diego, it's kudos, we're doing an absolutely terrific event. And we had a photo of our event this year, so take that, everybody. Oracle has nothing on that.
We have two.
Yeah, that, um, it was pride displayed between the Sheriff's Department, you know, CFA and Karen. Oh, that was, um, I think the kids got the biggest kick out of it though when they got a chance to see horses, car trucks, helicopters and police cars and guns. Oh, that's all, and dogs, yeah. And some of this, the drones. So, uh, you can't ask for anything more than that. So Chief and Chief, thank you very much. It was probably one of the best ones we had, thank you very much. And thank all those folks that dedicated that, you. Of course.
As somebody who may remember, the Stanton Library was closed down for quite some time for improvements. Um, and I'm conflicted to say that we're expecting it to be closed down again because we just received a state grant that will allow for licensing to repairs and upgrades, including roof repair, window replacement, uh, for energy efficiency, um, as well as security upgrades, HVAC and ADA upgrades for workers and restrooms. They're expecting to have the library closed down by the end of September, early October, probably early next year. So, um, I'm sad that we'll, we'll be not having access to our very lovely library. However, I am looking forward to amazing, fantastic, wonderful matches. As you're understanding.
We did have a fantastic, um, staff employee picnic at, um, Central Park. And everybody had a good time. And we actually had a raffle, which I thought was kind of cool. But, um, the group was outstanding, so well done. Um, I think probably there was a staff job for them, but I won't know how wonderful that was. Okay. Counsel, I think, uh, initiate odds for a future meeting? It's Karen, the attorney?
Here I have your license.
Same, Karen? Okay, Chief, you're up.
All right, good evening, Ms. Mayor and fellow council members. In July 2024, Stanton deputies responded to 2,157 calls for service, which is an average of 69 a day. Uh, deputies observed 961 violations of law and conducted 413 patrol checks throughout the city. Uh, 108 arrests were made, to include 28 felony bookings, 77 misdemeanor bookings, 41 bookings and four DUIs. Our Stanton, our deputy issued 84 traffic citations. And Stanton deputies handled a fall and criminal activity in the month of July. Uh, there were no homicides, no rapes, but we did have nine robberies. Uh, where subjects utilized different weapons during the act. We had 36 violent assaults, there were no arson's, 29 burglaries, 44 thefts, eight stolen vehicles and 36 domestic violence-related arrests. Investigations, uh, another busy month for them. They currently have 68 open cases and currently have 59 that had been closed during the month. A special enforcement team had over 300 homeless contacts, one who received services, 11 probation rolly contacts, 53 prostitution-related contacts. And our set teams are working for themselves, uh, for the two of them. Eight felony arrests, 46 misdemeanor arrests, uh, two stolen vehicles recovered, three vending and panderin-related, uh, citations, three interviews, human trafficking victims of or, and investigative referrals. And our response times averaged during the month of July, priority ones, emergency calls, four minutes and 35 seconds, priority twos, 20 minutes and 51 seconds, and our priority threes were approximately 36 minutes. That concludes my presentation and I hope you have the answer to your questions.
Please. Hey, Chief. Is there any other business before the council? I'm going to share your, uh, united.